Okay, you'll join me in a moment of prayer. Lord, just thank you for this day and just thank you for all that you do for us, for your many blessings, Lord, thank you for the rain we received earlier. Lord, just be with each of us here today, be with those of us here on the council, that we can make decisions that are in the best interest of the county. Lord, just guide and direct us in your son's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are here today to talk about possibly helping the county out because of the fiscal impact that Senate bill won, as of now, has impacted the county. We'll be having to redo things here in the next couple of years to help the fiscal stability of the county. So today we're looking at the possibility of introducing a couple of new local income taxes and adjusting one that's already in place. So I'm assuming that each of you have had a chance to look at this. So today what we're doing, we're looking at this and we can go through it and have discussion on how we feel on each part of it. I notice we have all three of our commissioners here, so if there's any questions on the hospital lit, what that could be used for. What we have in IC code says that it can be used for operating expenses. So therefore, if you have any questions, they would be able to probably give us some insight onto what they were thinking in asking us to look at this possibility. So the way this, the way this reads, the first one we would be looking at is the local income tax rate of 0.10 for the hospital. So I would entertain questions, comments, lots of questions.
Yep, so let's get started.
Okay.
Okay, down here another paragraph says, "The adoption of local income tax for the county's acute care hospital, blah, 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 reserved to relieve significant pressure on the general fund." What pressure is the county's acute care hospital putting on the general fund right now?
At this time, none.
Okay. I didn't think so, Nathan, I didn't.
Right.
And that's why I asked that. Some of these other areas we're looking at raising taxes, I understand their impact. We are shorting in the general fund and we are looking to raise some taxes for that. Me, as a taxpayer and as sitting here as a sitting council member, I don't know if we need to raise taxes for an acute care hospital. That is not requiring us to support them at this time. They seem to be doing good when I see what happens financially with that organization right now. Number one, we made them a loan, did we not?
Yes.
For an infrastructure project at no interest.
Yes.
And that's being paid back, and that's great. The second thing, they did a bond issue a couple of years ago, initially 2012, I believe, thirteen million, thirteen and a half million, and refinance that issue, they were paying about 4.65, 625, refinanced that, help me with the date they refinanced, I don't remember.
I remember it was October of 2021.
Twenty one.
That's when the county refinanced a number of bonds.
Yeah, after it went past its call provision, I'm sure. And refinanced it all back and refinanced it, the rate came in, you remember Marvin, two, two point something?
It was below three, I don't remember the exact rate.
Significant savings.
Yes.
For interest, interest payments for the hospital. And they also did not refinance the entire, I mean, they, they brought the principal down, quite a, maybe eight million, brought it down to eight, was that the refinance?
Yeah, I think they refinanced the balance.
Yeah. So looking at those things, I understand they got some, they got some wants and desires, I do. I don't understand, I'll be perfectly honest, I'm not close to the hospital, I don't understand the finances of Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement for a county hospital, okay? I don't. I hear about it, but I don't understand. So it's hard for me to make a decision without somehow understanding what's happening.
Okay.
And, and I'm not, you can address it, but back up. Clinics, okay? We now have a clinic service around this county, I appreciate that, okay? But it doesn't seem as if, the only thing I've heard is rumors that the clinics don't pay for themselves, I really haven't heard any real fact of that, seen the data on it and so forth, but that the clinics are costing the hospital and the hospital has to basically subsidize the clinics. Is that a true, is that a truth?
Absolutely true.
Okay.
There's, there's not a clinic in the world that is sustainable.
Okay. I know that for a fact, I've heard it, and you just verified it. So with all of that, balancing what I'm hearing versus balancing with what I'm doing, being here in budgets and looking at budgets and understanding what money we have and where we need to distribute it across the county, it never really comes to the forefront that, hey, our hospital needs this. The sheriff's department, the EMS department, economic development, there's need, there's need, and we keep moving judicial, we're looking at judicial lit. So, on the first reading, I'm just saying that I'm not in favor of a hospital lit. I said we'd get started.
If you're ready.
Go ahead, I'm taking notes.
By statute, if we have a county hospital, the county has to support. If something would happen and that hospital would close, the county will have to support the next nearest county hospital. That's tax money that leaves the county. Right now, there's a little over 500 employees at Green County General Hospital. We're operating right now at a little over $2 million loss for the year.
What's the reserve currently? How long can that be sustained?
I don't understand your question.
Well, if we're operating at a $2 million loss, where's that $2 million coming from?
Well, that's, that $2 million is off of our budget. Right now, we're probably, and I didn't check any of the numbers before I came, but we're probably right around six or seven days cash on hand. And with the Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, Medicare is about 27 cents on the dollar is what they reimburse, Medicaid's somewhere around 22 and a half, I think. And with our population here in the county, the vast majority of our patients are Medicare and Medicaid patients.
I agree. We have an aging, aging and underprivileged, however you want to put that term, Medicaid recipients.
Yes.
Population.
So, you know, at the bare minimum, 75 cents on every dollar is uncollectible. And with the governor's plans for reimbursement to rural hospitals, it's going to cut even deeper than it does now. Actually, the governor, the governor has been, he's going to have two different, they're calling them round tables, but there's not very much around about the table. He's had one in the northern part of the state and now he's planning on one south of the state, I don't know if it's happened yet or not, but his response to the first one he had was, people are just going to have to get used to driving farther for their medical care.
Okay.
And with our situation here in our locale, you know, IU Bloomington has a new hospital that's smaller than their last hospital, which makes absolutely no sense to me. If you want to have a baby in this general area, Green County is one of the last places you can still go that has an OB department. That's, OB is notoriously not popular. It's not profitable. The staffing is very expensive for OB because the, one thing is that specialization, if anything goes wrong, it's going to be bad for the provider and the hospital.
High risk.
Extremely high risk.
High.
From a financial standpoint.
Right.
Not necessarily, I mean, if everybody had their, their prenatal care that they should have, that doesn't actually happen in a community such as ours, then that even makes everything more high risk. And when a baby's involved, if something goes wrong, there's going to be litigation. I mean, this, and I understand that. But that, that drives up the cost of an OB unit.
So, let me ask this question. We just agreed that Medicare and Medicaid is the primary source.
Yes.
Of income for our county hospital.
Yes.
Then I, I back to what I said a minute ago. These two patients, Medicare and Medicaid, Medicare, okay, you, you generally have to be of a certain age to qualify for Medicare.
Yes.
Sixty five and above.
Yes.
Medicaid, you have to be of a certain income level.
Yes.
Or of a certain disability.
Yes.
To get Medicaid. Then this lit is asking people that are not in that category to pay for the hospital.
Correct.
We're asking for hardworking people in this county, whether you go there or not, whether you get your health care through Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's Crane.
No matter where you get it.
I know.
No matter where.
To pay the bills of the hospital.
Those same people are going to have to pay, if Green County General Hospital closes, the same people are going to have to pay for the money to go to Sullivan County by state statute.
Well, I'm not familiar with that, but I will become very familiar with that statute. Now, if Green County closes, what if Green County is sold out, taken over by some other hospital, let's not mention the big beast in the state, but let's say Davis County decides.
Davis County's already been taken over by Deaconess.
Yeah, and, and Deaconess, that's where I was going. So let's say they, Deaconess wants to venture on up here a little farther and take over this hospital. Then where does this lit fall in there? Still, if we got one on the books, it goes to Deaconess?
No. It's not a county hospital anymore.
Okay. I didn't think so. All right.
And from the commissioner's standpoint, I'm going to take my hospital board hat off because by statute, all three commissioners sat on the hospital board, and I, I've been the chairman of the hospital board for the last four years. I'm going to take that hat off and put my commissioner's hat on. With this lit, we think it would be a good caveat to add to this lit that it be used for infrastructure and not for operations.
I'm not sure that it can be used for infrastructure.
Well, that would be, that would be a operation of the hospital, but then it would be more tightly constrained.
Okay.
Well, it seems like they're doing pretty good on infrastructure right now. I just saw an advertisement for their new ICU, I don't know what that cost.
Two million dollars.
I know that.
A million dollars of that was a grant, the, the million dollars that a hospital put up is what we saved back from our, when we refinanced the bond issue. We saved a million dollars of that back for the match for the million dollars for the, it's a USDA grant.
For a new ICU.
With the whole process, the whole thought behind the new ICU is, at this point in time, the ICU is on the ground floor right next to the OR. Our OR needs to expand, there's no place to do it without going outside the footprint of the building. And at that point in time, engineering and the regulations involved are astronomical. So we moved the ICU to the third floor to free up that space for expansion, future expansion of the OR.
Okay.
That is the most economical way that we can do that. And when we're going to be financially able to do that is yet to be seen.
To expand the operating, you mean? To expand the operating?
Yes, to expand the OR. That is, at this point in time, we have three surgeons employed by the hospital, and we have two operating rooms.
Fully employed?
Yes.
Every day?
Yes, yes.
No other, their responsibilities aren't somewhere else and they're visiting here as a satellite?
No. They're actually hospital employees, they work there every day, however many days they, they work that week.
I would kind of like to say too, that just from my point of view, they now have a state-of-the-art MRI and that kind of stuff that you can go and have a diagnostic test done, and like for the Medicare, Medicaid people especially, I think it's important for them to be able to go here locally because like for me, I don't drive in Bloomington, I wasn't driving at all, I was for a while, but there'd be a lot of people that get to Bloomington to do those diagnostic type of tests, so that's another consideration from my point of view, but it's nice to be able to go there, I still happen to go to, sort of, whatever it is landmark or whatever it is, I used to have.
The procedures I have done, I can get about 90% of them done here.
Right.
Which in turn means you don't miss as much time off work, you don't have to drive, you don't have the cost of the driving.
Yeah. And what we're looking at, at 0.1, I mean, and my business, if I'm looking at this right, isn't that like $2.50 on $100 or something?
That I can't tell for sure.
Can't buy a car from that most likely.
And then regardless how it goes, the working man's going to pay for, depending for everything.
Everything.
You know, it doesn't matter what it is.
And.
I agree.
Our, our whole idea of this is to keep the hospital by, you know, we're going to spend the same amount of money whether Green County General Hospital stays open or not because we're just going to have to pay that money to a different county hospital. So it just, it just makes sense, I mean, we have good, good paying jobs there, we have 500 employees, why would we want to take a chance on that leaving?
I don't know, but I'd like to do a survey and ask all of them if they don't mind their income tax going up to pay for their hospital job. I mean, that's what we're saying, is if those are good jobs, 500 people right there, if they live in S County, which I'm hoping that the majority of them do, I'm thinking a lot of them probably do, I know a lot of people that work over there and they live around this area. Survey says, hey, we're going to raise your taxes to pay for your hospital here, are you good with that? I, again, in trying to balance SB one and the reduction in property taxes and everything else we got to balance, and I said during the budget meeting, we needed to visit this, raising lit, because I think it's, it's coming.
It's definitely coming.
But I didn't really, and I'm not fully convinced yet that hospital acute care lit is, is something we need to venture in. It just doesn't seem like that's the pressing issue at the moment, we have other pressing issues. Man, we've got places that need more money.
The reason we bring this up now is in '27, whenever all this lit changes, if we don't already have something on the books, we're not going to get it on the books. And.
Why do you mention it? Why do you say we won't get it on the books? Because of the public? Because of?
Because of the way that, that lit's going to be distributed. It's not going to be distributed like it is now.
Right.
So that, at that point in time, that lit's all, the way I understand, that lit's all going to go in one bucket. So that bucket needs to be as full as it can be.
And that's kind of why we're discussing this in a hurry, because if we don't get it past the budget time, then we may have a big government for, who knows how long, you know?
We have to, yeah, that's why we had the special meeting, because if we don't get it, if we don't make a decision and get it advertised and have the public hearing and have all this done by the end of October, then we can't do anything in January of 2026, we'd have to wait another year for all of this, so.
But if we get this 0.1% acute care lit on the books, then that stays?
For at least two years.
For just two years?
Well, that you're suggesting it takes two years.
Yeah.
January 1, 2028.
That's the way everything, all of our local income taxes that we have right now.
Right, right. I do understand that.
Will be phased out in January of 2028, so.
Well, I would pay $2.50 on $100 for that to go to Bloomington Hospital.
Well, if you had to build Bloomington Hospital, how long are you going to lay there before somebody gets to see you? I mean, and nothing.
Not good.
I'm, I'm not badmouthing IU Health, don't get me wrong, I'm not badmouthing them. But when you build a new hospital and your ER has fewer beds than your old hospital, man, what are you thinking? When you don't have room in the old hospital for, I mean, I know for a fact, because I waited with her for two days to get a bed in IU Health in the old hospital. I know how hard it is for us at Green County General to find a bed to transfer somebody out of there that we can't take care of, that we don't have anybody with their specialty. I mean, the beds just aren't available, and the fact that you're just going to have to drive farther to, for your healthcare is about the most assamined statement I've ever heard in my life, because we already don't have room for the people we've got. So why would we even consider doing away with beds that we have? I mean, it's.
Well, I'm not advocating, I'm not advocating doing away with the hospital, let's just be right upfront about that right now. I'm not advocating with closing Green County General or selling it off or anything like that.
I understand.
I'm just looking at the application of local income tax through this body, who, who has the taxpayers behind us to say, this is where we seven, or at least the majority of the seven, believe your tax dollars should go first priority. And the hospital's not my first priority. They're, they're, they're a priority, they're just not my first.
Okay, and our concern, and, tell me if I'm wrong, our concern is that with all the other changes coming, coming around on this healthcare, we may not be able to keep the hospital.
I have a little different take than what Nathan was saying, if we were doing this so we could expand services, if we could give people raises, regular, those kinds of operating expenses, I would not be in favor, I would be in Randall's camp, you need to cut back and say.
Right.
The county hospital is a county hospital, that's our infrastructure, that's our building over there. If they sell that building, you're going to need the rewards from that. If they sell it or go out of business and we're stuck with that building, I think that this is investment and it should be in the infrastructure building, just like we tried to take care of the courthouse, the jail, the annex, the event center, all the other buildings that we have here. We, we think it's a county building that we need to take care of, and we think this is a very small investment to take care of a building that we own.
I, I'm softening to that idea.
Well, if he's got his commissioner's hat on, he doesn't have his hospital.
Well, because, you know, just giving the, the hospital more money to do as they please is not, that more tax money, lit money, to do as they please is not something I want to see.
And I'm, I'm not going to say that where this is being tax money for the hospital to do with as they please, because there's three members of the board right here that make sure that the hospital doesn't get to do what they please. That's the reason we have the hospital board, is to make sure that the hospital just doesn't do what it pleases. And I can guarantee you, I have stopped the hospital doing what it pleases more than once.
It's a 1970 structure that needs a lot of work.
Exactly. And that was built about the time I moved to Bloomington.
It, it is, and a lot of it will be worked that nobody will ever see or ever know about, but there are some needs that are in the building that, that needs to be taken care of.
Well, the money that we gave, well, that was the original children, one of the original children from that building.
I don't know what we've done, that's been a lifesaver for us, that we were able to give us the money to do that, but we, we did not have the money to replace that children.
No. Well.
Because again, obviously.
Without debt.
And we're pretty adamant, three of us have made that very claim that we're not doing any more debt.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just make a remark to attest what you were saying about trying to find a bed, you know, with my situation, they had to look around to try to find someplace to get me to, and so.
Sure.
I, I can attest, you know, they worked, it, it was God, but it worked fast, I mean, we ended up with the transportation and we ended up where I needed to be, but.
If you look at the changes in that hospital since 2012, it's, it's unbelievable. I mean, the changes, the betterment of that facility has improved greatly. And actually, we draw some patients from Bloomington. Because we have better care than they do there. I mean, especially in healthcare, better's not always better. And whenever we have people coming from Bloomington to come to our hospital, that's a testament that, you know, you just, you don't get any better than that. Whenever, all the opportunities that are in Bloomington for medical care. for medical care, and they want to come to us, that's, that's huge. I mean.
Are we ready to discuss other pieces to this?
Which way is the best way for us to do, to go ahead and?
I was going to suggest that if discussion has concluded on this particular item, then perhaps taking a vote at this point, whether or not to include it in the ordinance, in the proposed ordinance to be advertised would be the right move, and then treat each one the same way as you conclude discussion.
Okay. Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to accept including in the ordinance the .1% for the hospital.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Brent has a second. Okay, we'll do roll call. Brian?
Yes.
Randall?
No.
Brent?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. Okay, so that part will be included.
Thank you all for taking the topic.
Okay, thank you. Okay, up next is the,
Judicial.
The judicial lit at point,
Two.
At .15, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, .15. So. Okay, so with the judicial lit, there are only certain parts that that can be used for. It's with the court reporter, court bailiff, court administrator. So it's basically salaries and any benefits for their salaries can be taken out of this. So. So then that would help relieve part of the general fund on costs there for the judicial system.
So question there. Am I remembering correctly, prior to courthouse security, we had bailiffs?
Yeah.
Rogers? Was that Eric Rogers was a bailiff? Is that his name? And Dennis?
I believe they still have a position that is defined as a bailiff.
I think that's-
But that's not in the temporary terms you would think of as an armed official inside.
Right. Do I, I'm not real familiar with bailiff duties. Do sometimes the courthouse security serve in the courtrooms?
Quite often. But the court office, the court office has their bailiff with a different set of duties.
And do we have bailiffs now?
They're charged with the jury's exactly.
Yeah.
And do we have a bailiff now? Bailiffs?
The, the court offices do.
We don't, you don't know who they are?
Bailiff, also known as an enforcement agent in the UK.
Love AI.
Yes.
Who carries that position for each judge?
Caleb, I believe is, and I can't think of his last name.
Jales.
Caleb Jales, he works-
Is the bailiff in Superior Court.
Okay.
I don't remember which of the ladies in Superior Courts is-
I was thinking Joanie, but I'm not sure.
She's a senior court officer.
Okay.
But I, I-
I think it's a little confusing because prior to courthouse security, there was an armed official, but each judge employed and they were considered a court bailiff as well. But it's two separate entities. And what else, could they actually work for the judge in our office?
What does 1.5 look like, or .15 look like?
.15, he, hold on, sorry, I gotta put my reading glasses on. What Ben sent us would be 1,303,678 for that. And as I, whenever he was putting the numbers together, if we had left things exactly like what were budgeted for 2026, if we had left the 4% raise in, if I figured correct that all the court reporters, just on salaries, were somewhere, I think around 450,000 if it was at the 4%, I have not gone back through and redone it since we've got the new budget numbers, but, so that right there and then, you know, that would take almost, I mean, not half of that, but, and then we could also do any kind of benefits out of that also to help relieve that burden in other areas.
Yeah, the general fund?
Yes.
So let's say, you said a million, more than a million, and we're spending 400 and some thousand on salaries for these reporters, bailiff administrator?
Correct.
Or did you just do the court reporter?
I just did the court reporters on, for that.
Okay.
I didn't look at the others. With the simplest ones that, you know, we had.
So my question there is, do we need to go all the way to .15?
I think part of-
Says we can do a .2, can we go to, you know, .1?
We could. I think part of, I think part of it, we, obviously, if we're doing like the hospital acute care and then if we're doing an adjustment to the correctional facility lit, adding to it, obviously, we didn't go the most that we could with the judicial. I think the reason why you gave us those numbers was, was for the fact that because of SB1, you know, that our numbers are lit, part of it was to help give us a buffer for whenever things change, when we have to adopt new stuff in 2027 for 2028. So I think it was just to help us possibly to have enough in general fund to alleviate some of those whenever we have to change how we do things, but.
I think one thing that's, to me, that's important to remember, and, you know, for anybody that's going to listen to us, if they do,
Right.
is the money we're going to anticipate losing.
Correct.
On the property change. And if I remember correctly, I don't have it paper with me, but it was like 876,000 on one line, right?
Correct.
Because of the property's tax changes.
Yes.
To me, the lit's are more fair than property taxes because everybody is paying for these services.
Correct.
And just the property owners, because, you know, why should, why should property owners, you know, have to pay for all your EMS and all your shares and all that?
Well, yeah, I guess that's one thing that we should mention, make sure that, you know, we keep saying SB1, that Senate bill one that the governor signed into law back in April, and so it means that the whole restructuring of property, personal, real property taxes, personal property tax, and the local income taxes, those are all going to be restructured.
And we still have to provide the same services.
Yes, and we still have to provide all the same services to keep the county running.
But, I mean, just my comment, I think income taxes are a more fair way, and while we said, well, I always think we should do a way with income tax, federal income taxes, we can just have federal sales tax, and everybody has to pay something because everybody's going to fund something.
Right.
Even if they're voting for cash, but to more fairly distribute it that way.
Mm-hmm.
Well, one thing is that I, my feeling about this is I don't know that we've had a reduction in property tax revenue like we've had in the last several years. But property values have not been reduced.
Correct.
Now, with caps and some other stuff, when we went from category one property, or tier one, or category tier two, or whatever, I know last year we included some things, swimming pools. You have a swimming pool on your property now, gets a huge, used to be a huge tax burden, now it's a huge tax break. Okay, by the way, we rewrote some property tax laws. So I do understand some of that. But it's always on something that is worth more value. Your property doesn't go down. But Karen, I fully believe that the income base in this county is declining. We have a declining aging population. And the income base with its decline makes this an even bigger challenge. Now, if somebody can show me the numbers and say, no, 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 we are bringing in more highly educated, highly paid, high-powered earners into this county every week, then I'm all for it. Well, can it save us? Maybe Kratos can save us. Maybe Ropel can save us. To bring in some high-paying, high-dollar people that want to live in Green County.
Well, fine.
And it all starts and ends with high-dollar earners wanting to live in Green County.
But we have to, Randall, we have to get the money somewhere, because
We do.
We still have to go into courts, and if we are going to get the property taxes, or the personal property taxes, how are we going to pay for this stuff? We've got to do something.
Understood, but we're asking to get a million from the taxpayers for something we're paying about $400,000 for right now.
Well, well-
We're being forced to ask the taxpayer. It's coming from the feds to the state to the counties, is what's happening.
Part of it, though, the, the 400 and some thousand, by the time you take those employees and you-
Well, let's say a half million.
But even if you put in the benefits, that's going to add in, I don't know.
27%. 27%.
Another hundred grand on 400,000. That's 20%, 25% actually. So I'm not for just jacking these rates right up to the limit for right max. I'm okay with us, with, with the judicial lit, courthouse lit, whatever you're going to call it. I'm okay with that. I just don't know if I'm okay with .15. And that's, that's for the, you know, the four of you to decide. I'm more favorite of something like a .1.
And that's why we're having this meeting to have discussions, so. Are there any other comments? Brent or Brian, you guys have any opinions on?
Brian, don't quiet.
Here's, here's-
Take it in.
I'm sorry, we asked Brian. Here's where I'm going with some of this. Do we not now have PS lit, EMS lit, EDIT lit, correctional facilities lit? Okay, are we running surplus or deficit with those lits in our budget in those categories? Meaning, are we taking in more than we're spending?
Right now, I think we are taking in a little more than what we're spending.
We are taking more taxes in than we're spending in those areas. Now, I understand-
I can fix that.
I don't want you to fix it, Nathan. I want us to spend what we taxed the population of this county, and I want it to be fair on both sides. I don't want the sheriff's department to have a bake sale to fund the jail. I don't.
Yeah.
But then again, when we have excess in those lits that grow, that looks like we might be overtaxing our constituents.
Well, I think at this point, it can kind of look like that, but like we're saying, this is to try to help offset, because we have no idea how things are going to become 2027 and definitely with 2028. I mean-
But will our taxing with our, our ability to levy taxes change? We don't know that either.
No, but we, I think we do know that there's-
I think you do know that.
I mean, we do know that there, unless they do some major tweaking once the legislative session starts in 2026, and then again in 2027, there would have to be major tweaks put in place in order for us to know that we're not going to need whatever reserves we could build up to help offset in 2028.
My view is on this, I'd rather have surplus than not have that. And if this is only a two, or two-year deal, then, you know, we can go back and revisit this in two years.
What is the, right now, the max lit for a county is two and a half.
Yes, and that's-
What's it going to?
This, if we do-
No, in the new, later on, certified shares.
We will, we won't have certified shares. It goes to 1.2 for the county.
But I thought that, that the entire amount could be a bigger amount than two and a half.
It all, no, well, yes.
2.9.
2.9.
2.9 is what they're saying could be projected, but in that calculation, it's really not 2.9, it's more like, it could be 2.7 to 2.8.
Bigger than we are right now.
But we won't get all that money.
But we won't get all that.
It's a lot less than what we're getting here.
Yeah.
Because the majority of that will go to your local municipals.
Yeah.
Yeah. 1.2 would be the county's definite share out of that.
And with, don't look at the balance of those lits and think that we're overtaxing now, because we've been very conservative with those lits, knowing what we've got coming up for infrastructure projects and new things like that. So you, you can't look at that balance of that lit and say we're overtaxing because we're not spending it. Actually, there was an advertisement in the paper for the rehabilitation of the outside of the courthouse that we haven't even got yet, and we already know that that's going to be over a million dollars. So you can't look at my Q and K fund and say, well, you've got too many dollars in there, we're taxing, overtaxing, but yeah, next year I'm going to have over a million dollars of that come out, just like that. So we're kind of being very careful with what we do spend so that we have the money to do those projects. Because we don't want any more, we don't want any county debt either.
Borrowing, you mean? For, for projects?
Yes. I mean, when Ed and I came in, there was a tremendous amount of money owed on projects. And people whittled that down to, next year, the only thing we'll owe on is the jail. And myself, I'm quite proud of that fact that we've been able to do that. And we've actually got a little money for these other projects coming up. And I think we've been extremely responsible with the way we've spent that money.
I mean, I understand where you're coming from with all this. I mean, I feel like if we didn't absolutely need to do this, we wouldn't be having this meeting.
I, I understand, and I, I just said that, you know, looking at us going from 2.15 to 2.5, that really wasn't my, I don't want to say my idea. Was, that wasn't my gist, my motivation, when I said we need to look at raising lit.
Right.
I didn't say we need to raise it to the max.
Right.
And not have a really clear plan going forward after two years. So again, I said, I'm for, I'm for the courthouse lit, just not for .1, or .15. I'd be more in line for .1, and if you're ready, if everybody's ready, I'm ready to vote on something.
Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion for the .15, or we'll ask, whatever, anybody?
No, I think you should vote on the .15.
Okay.
If it fails, we'll make a different motion.
Okay.
I'm getting a sneaky feeling here.
Do I have a motion? Okay, Karen made the motion for the 1.5.
Let's get to the end of the bill, second.
Second, Brian? Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Randall?
No.
Brent?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Okay, and I will be a yes. Okay. Let's discuss the correctional facility lit. Okay, and so for that, that was the proposed rate of increasing that- Okay, and so for that, that was the proposed rate of increasing that, um, another tenth, point one, to help with those costs also there.
So the statute says correctional or rehabilitation facilities, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Are we funding any, are we using any money for any rehabilitation facilities currently? Or is it all correctional facilities?
It all goes to correctional facilities right now.
Okay.
It all goes to jail, jail bond and repairs for the jail.
Yeah.
We used to take those jail repairs from Q and C, and we've transitioned those repairs to the correctional facilities lit due to the fact it can all be used on that facility. And our Q and C budget has a, has a wider range of projects it could be used on.
Gotcha.
And I think also, um, can the correctional facility lit, doesn't it have a little bit more leeway now with what you can use it for? Can it also be used for any other operating expenses within the jail?
It can be used for operating expenses, but if you go to the maximum of zero point three percent, the maximum can be used for operating expenses. Out of that is zero point two percent.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that. So if we go to point three?
If you go to point three, then the maximum can be directed at. Operating expenses is point two.
Leaving point one for...
For debt service. Yeah. And since this, this has historically been debt service first and then repairs, uh, I would assume that that would be the expectation here. It's just that with two facilities joined together, one that's considerably older than the other, uh, there's going to be a wider range of expenses, particularly with respect to the older facility, although now the, quote unquote, new facility is six years old.
Now, can this be spent on community corrections for the court release? That's rehabilitation. I mean, is it community transition program or?
My recollection is the statute is not clear on that. Uh, I don't recall that it provides a good definition of correctional or rehabilitation facilities, that it just uses that terminology of the statute itself. And I don't recall that there's any guidance under the statute.
I asked that same question, Brian.
My concern for it, for that is, you know, they've cut the community corrections budget the last couple of years, and we're gonna have to start funding our community corrections, part of it at least, not totally. But they're gonna come asking for money.
Out of the general fund?
Out of the general fund.
And was, did you?
We don't know.
We don't know if we can use any of this?
Correct.
But at least this would be used for...
If it's, if it's definitely a no, then...
We haven't...
There's nothing that says we can't.
We haven't used any of the correctional facilities fund for any repairs at the community corrections.
Right.
Uh, and historically, we do debt service first out of that correctional facilities fund, and then the rest is used for repairs at the jail. It would take, it would take pressure off the commissioners if it could be used for community corrections repaired, but I don't know if that's, I asked Marvin about it one time, and we aired on the side of caution not to get in trouble.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that would be something we need to look into. Because I, I kind of, I mean, I felt like whenever Ben, our financial advisor, when he mentioned things, that maybe there was a little bit more leeway with what the correctional facility could be used for, but he didn't give me the IC code or anything, so I don't know exactly. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion for the correctional facility rate at point ten.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Brian, second?
Uh, Mac, I'm just, you said point ten?
The point one zero, isn't that what we're at on that?
Just right, we're going from point two to point three.
Right, okay, but the point ten to raise it to point three, sorry.
Yeah.
Motion to raise by point ten to the point thirty.
Yeah. I don't want, I don't want us talking about point ten and then the rate is actually going to be point three.
Three, yes, okay. So increase it by point ten to point thirty. So Brian, that's your motion?
Correct.
Brent, you seconded?
Yeah.
Um, do I need to do a roll call vote?
Let's do it.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Okay.
On your back.
Brent?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yeah.
And I am a yes. Okay, um, is there any other discussion? Is there anything else we need to do, Marvin, today?
I believe so. Actually, there is. We'll have to... One of the challenges that we face now is dealing with a newspaper that is not locally owned that is published only two days a week. The proposed advertisement will go to the newspaper tomorrow morning. As a matter of fact, they've already had a proposed advertisement, uh, it just had different dates on it. If we can get publication on Friday, then we should be able to do the regular meeting on the twentieth as scheduled.
Okay.
Uh, it's cutting it very close, but publication would be Friday morning, and the meeting would be Friday afternoon, so there would be more than ten full days involved.
Okay.
If not, then you would be looking either at moving the regular meeting or to conducting a special meeting to dealing with this matter
Okay.
on the twenty-seventh or later. And I know that that had not been a favorable week for several of you.
Correct.
So that's what we're up against in terms of publication and a need to address. And of course, I'm gonna be gone very soon at that time. Uh, I'll leave notes for you.
Okay.
But, uh, so we need to, uh, at this point, set a date for a public hearing. And that is part of the difficulty we're facing, set a date for a public hearing so that we can get this published, and then hope that the public hearing date that we've got in it matches with the publication date. We'll certainly do everything we can.
Um, I'm hoping that the public hearing can be conducted on the twentieth.
Of course.
Yes.
But, uh...
Have we made, have we made notification of that meeting, or we're gonna do that?
Until this past today, I could not finalize the notice that has to be published because I didn't know what I'd have to be taking out, if anything. And now, of course, we have some new dates, but that will be easy to fix. It'll go to the newspaper tomorrow morning. It'll probably be there by eight fifteen.
So is there any, is, is, if we move that date from the twentieth, a couple of days further into that week? Twenty-second, twenty-third?
It won't work because the next publication date will be Tuesday, which is the fourteenth.
And then we'd have to go to twenty-fourth, which is the Friday.
That's what we're up against.
I think we just hope it goes the twentieth, we'll do it tomorrow, and we get the twentieth.
Yeah.
I'll be getting in touch with Kelly if it proves to be a problem.
Okay.
We'll push. That's all we can do.
Right.
They're moving toward a publication deadline, and with some of the other newspapers they own, they have relatively firm publication deadlines set that require several days advance notice. They just haven't done, to my knowledge, to the lit paper yet.
Okay, so we'll hope for the twentieth, and we'll go from there.
Same. So motion, motion to set public hearing for the twentieth?
Okay. I need a motion for public hearing to be October twentieth.
I'll make that.
Okay, second?
I'll say.
Brian, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Did we need to set a time?
At four o'clock, regular meeting. I'll include it. I'll get it right.
Yeah. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll bid.
Okay, Brent, second. Second by Karen, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.